All right, it is now six o'clock and we'll call the July 24th meeting of the Concord Site Board to order. Mary, would you please play the role?
I will. Mr. Howell.
Here.
Ms. Ackerman.
Here.
Mr. Dane.
Present.
Ms. Escobedo. Ms. Escobedo's not here yet. Myself, Mary Hartman, present.
Thank you.
Why don't we check to make sure. And Diane, could you hear that? Since she was just checking to see whether.
Yeah, maybe Linda isn't here and I see there that.
Thank you. Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
No, Linda would be a tile.
Well, we have a quorum anyway. She can check in. Yes, when she gets there.
She shows that she's joining, yeah.
It does. Okay, thank you. All right, so first item on the agenda is a period of public comment, where we invite comment from people who have observations on matters that are not on the agenda for this evening. And so do we have any such comment? Let's just, well, let's start in the back of the room. Let's start in the back of the room so he has the longest to go.
Thanks, thank you. We try to keep this to three minutes.
Right, keep it under. Rich Feeley, 347 Lexington Road, President of the Concord Housing Foundation. I think some of you are aware that the Joint Committee on Revenue, the legislature is holding a hearing this week on our home rule petition for a permit fee surcharge. This is something that's been supported now by town meeting twice. I feel it's an important source of revenue for affordable housing, particularly as it becomes harder to use tax levy funds. And I sincerely hope the board will send a letter. I didn't see it on the agenda for tonight, which is why I speak. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, you also, you submitted a letter that's in our package tonight, which we thank you.
I mean, if you would like to crib from that, we would be very happy to have.
Now, I think the legislature must be very aware how we feel about this, having submitted this as a home rule petition.
Carrie.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that Linda Escobedo, who is our, your liaison, who's been tracking that. She and Chris Carmody, our legislative liaison, are working to put together some testimony that we would submit and and the thought was since town meeting has acted on this multiple times and we know where the board sits, that the board didn't necessarily need to to take an affirmative vote to.
Great, as long as something from the select board arrives by Friday, we would be very pleased. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Tanya, you're next.
Hi, Tony Gayle, 62 Prescott Road. I'm assuming that the code, the code of conduct item is not on the agenda, right?
The what?
There is a document about code of conduct and committees and public comment policies, things like that.
Code of conduct, yes. So, and we have, I think we have a letter from you.
Yes.
Comment from, which I think is also included in the package as well for the meeting.
Oh, I didn't see it in the package.
It wasn't?
I sent it later.
Right.
Yeah.
That was, we just, we did put that in as a matter of information. We're not even considering that. And I think that if we do consider it, it will take, we want to get a lot of input on it and.
I see. Thank you. I'm particularly concerned about the smaller committees who have, who manage things in a different way than the more controversial ones. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, do we have any, any other public comment? Please identify yourself. I, I, some people I know and I can call them by name, so they, but.
Anna Feldwick, 343 Commonwealth Avenue. I apologize for reading, but I want to be efficient. I wanted to say something about the Warner's Pond Project, not Duro Park, but the Warner's Pond Project. I'm one of a very rapidly growing group of people who are very attached to the pond and extremely upset about the current plan by the Natural Resource Commission to remove the dam and drain the pond permanently. We feel that they have not explored fully some of the options. I know they've been working on it for a long time, but we think that we've come up with some additional options. And we are requesting that the NRC slow down and listen to our suggestions. The NRC held two meetings in the spring, at which point they they presented their recommendation that the dam should be removed and the pond destroyed. And at those meetings, they said they wanted community feedback. Many people stood up, particularly at the second meeting. Many people have written in to the bridge. There's a growing Facebook group and a group that is talking by email. And we feel that despite saying that they want community feedback, they're really done listening to community feedback. But the problem is that many people didn't understand this project, didn't know the extent to which it was going on. And the best analogy I can come up with is it feels to us like we said to the doctor, I have a pain in my leg 10 years ago when the pond was filling in. And now the solution is that you should amputate the leg. And now we feel like we're fighting to get out of the hospital with our legs on. So we really would like to request a pause, at which time we could get involved and float some of the options we think we have. And that is really what we're asking for, slowing down.
Thank you. I assume that the, once the NRC makes a recommendation, it's going to come back to us, isn't it, to actually make the final decision on what happens?
It goes to town meeting.
Goes to town meeting?
Yes.
All right, then we will have a recommendation for town meeting, so we'll probably have another opportunity to hear from you. It might.
But town meeting is, is months away. And right now, the NRC has a bid open for contractors to remove the dam. So they're, they're done listening to other alternatives.
Yes, thank you. That was a, well, okay, I won't comment, I won't comment on the comment.
I just, I, I wanted to thank Linda and Chris for submitting that testimony on the legislation. And also on the communications section, there is a letter or an email from Alan Cathcart. But it doesn't really, it refers to a whole email string. And I didn't really understand what the whole thing was about. So, because it's only that one piece of it.
It's someone about the, the West Concord Commonwealth Avenue?
I think so. But I, I, I didn't understand it because there's so much of the email trail missing. So maybe if you want to somebody send you or Shannon, send the rest of it to the board so we have the context. And I appreciate that.
I believe that was probably sent to the whole board. But if it wasn't, I can.
Oh, no, it's just in the packet, only that one piece.
But it was correspondence that was sent, that I received from Alan Cathcart, which I took the top of the, the, and put it in the package.
Right, and, and we don't have the rest of it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Be happy to bring that to anybody.
Yeah, I have to say the context of that was a little unclear to me as well.
Okay.
Okay. Are we still taking public comment?
Are we?
Are we done?
Yes, I think so. Nobody is jumping up.
Okay, good.
So are we ready to move on to the consent agenda then?
I have something I would like to take off of the consent agenda, or I have questions about it.
Sure.
It's the gift acceptance from the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail for an ADA portable toilet for the trail valued at $575. And my questions are, I thought that the bathrooms there were finished, so I'm wondering why, why we need this? That's my first question. And my second is if we do need it. I see that the purchase order was for delivery and installation, and I'm wondering who would actually clean this?
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to ask Deputy Town Manager Megan Zamuto to respond to your questions.
Thank you. To answer your first question, the septic system for the restrooms was inspected by the agent of the Board of Health. And, but a certificate of compliance has not been issued for the restrooms. And it's required that an installer certification or an engineer's as-built plan must be submitted to the Health Division prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance. So the certificate of compliance is required first, and then after that, the building department can issue a certificate of occupancy. So the restrooms are not in use because of those two outstanding orders. And my understanding is that the restroom will be added to the contract of Public Works. It's been worked on with Aaron McClosco so that the cleaning will be done by the company that does it for all the other ones that we have in town.
For the $575? Seems like a good deal.
Yeah, it does seem like, it does seem like a good deal.
You mean, maybe a gift that keeps on giving?
I do, I, our transportation planner, Erin Stevens, is out of town this week, and I know she had been working with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, Friends of the Bruce Freeman for this project. And so when I connected with her today about the details, she's out of town. So I can't speak to that. But I know she had been in touch with Public Works regarding this restroom and it's.
Okay, so there's really no, no rush about accepting this gift, is there?
Well, actually, I'm the liaison, and I know the friends are in a rush because the, the peak bike season is, is summer and fall, and so they don't want to put it off anymore.
And I believe the intent was to have restrooms there for the for the opening of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail.
Right.
So are you happy, Mary, with this staying on the consent agenda, or do you want to?
Actually, I'm reading something now that's attached to the, to the thing I have to sign, which is that it will be serviced once a week.
So is it, this is a temporary measure until the permanent restrooms are working? But that's the.
That's right. And I guess it's going to be what, till November? Because that's, the rental agreement is through November.
Right.
And it will be serviced once a week, is what I just, I just read that.
Okay, all right.
Um, yes, I'm good.
Okay, so.
And I have another item. I was working with Shannon on some slight corrections on the minutes.
I think those have been made. Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, great. I didn't see that.
Just accept those as, as, as corrected.
Thank you.
Okay, so now you want to call a roll on the.
Sure, move to, I need to move, I need to move.
Motion.
Your motion.
Move to accept the consent, consent agenda as modified in packet.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Myself, Mary Hartman, I.
Thank you. Right now, we move on to committee appointments. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Andrews?
I do. Move to appoint Jay Ray Andrews for a term to expire May 31, 2026, to the Concord Housing Development Corporation. For a second.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman, I. Very good.
Good, thank you.
He'll be good.
The only remark I have to make at this point is I want to alert everyone to the fact that the, that we and the Office of the Town Clerk are going to be holding a workshop for committee chairs on some of the responsibilities that go along with running public meetings and the open meeting law. And that will be held on September 19th. And that's a Saturday in the morning at the Goodman Room in the, in the Republic Library. So put that on your calendar. And do we have any committee liaison reports?
We haven't had the town manager's report.
Oh, did we skip over that?
We did.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I, and in fact, that should have come before my remarks. Can I?
I think you did the same thing at the last meeting.
Don't take it, don't take it personally. It's just that it's a very narrow line in the thing, and I don't see very well.
I'm, I'm not going to take it personally. Thank you and good evening and welcome to everybody who's here. It's been, it's really been years, I think, since we've had this many people at the meeting. So it's, it's nice to have people here. So referring to the report from July 21st that was recently distributed, I note we actually included two, two stories on the grab and go luncheon that the fire department had for the senior center, I think on pages one and three. This is a great event that we've been doing for a number of years. And before the pandemic, we would have maybe 30 or 40 seniors that would come to this event. During the pandemic, they transitioned it to a grab and go where people could stay in their cars and drive through. And we had a much higher participation, and the fire department decided to just keep that model going, and they've been able to have about 100 or so seniors participate in, in the program. So it's, it's a really nice event, and I know the firefighters really enjoy the opportunity to interact with the community in a non-emergency situation. There's some information in here about activity levels at both the police and fire department. I did want to make a note that Acting Sergeant John O'Connor was just sworn in as a, as a regular or permanent sergeant. And that, that's really exciting. He's a, a very, a young and talented officer, and it's great that this early in his career, he has the opportunity to, to move up to the ranks of sergeant. We did have officers participate in the event. I guess it was two weekends ago now, the Glory for George event, which had a great turnout, several hundred people, I think with fairly limited publicity. And I just imagine how big these events would be once we really start getting going on, on publicity. We did have two, two of our staff, Detective Cara Palladino and our clinician Emily Black met with the director at the Kiwi Recovery Center on Baker Ave. This actually opened mid-June. Not, not a whole lot of fanfare, but they were able to connect with the director there to talk about the services being provided, and we want to make sure that we maintain a, a strong and good working relationship with the administration over there so that we're able to provide the level of support that they need, and we understand you know, the, the level of activity that's happening at that center. So we had, the fire department had 101 calls for service last week, including a rescue at Walden Pond, which was successful. So that was, that was great to hear. I did want to mention that according to the Massachusetts Vehicle Census, there are 930 plug-in electric vehicles in Concord, which reg, which accounts for 6.4% of the vehicle census in town. And only two communities, Lexington and Weston, have a higher plug-in vehicle census at 6.5%. So we're pretty darn close to them. And the statewide average is, is only 1.3. So we have far more plug-in vehicles in Concord than most communities. There's a note in here that the light plant is offering rebates to businesses in larger multi-unit residential properties for, excuse me, heat pumps. And they are offering $2,500 to $4,500 per ton of cooling capacity. So that's a, a nice benefit. I, I know you know this, and hopefully the community knows that, knows this as well, but all of our pools at BD are back online after about a two-month closure. We've had a tough time at BD, but feel that we have gotten to the bottom of all of the the issues there. We're working with a lot of additional contractors and, and have a much better maintenance and inspection plan going forward. There's a lot of detail in the report that I, I won't go through at this point in time. Note about some of the fitness programs that, that BD is off, BD and the Recreation Department are offering. There are a number of free events coming up yet this summer, which you can read about in the report. The report is online as well. A nice, really nice story about the summer camp program. I know we've talked about this before, but our Recreation Department, the School Department, Board of Health, many departments across the town worked collaboratively to provide summer camp for all of the students who are living at the family shelter at the Best Western. Just really, we're very creative and really went out of their way to be able to provide opportunities for, for those students. And there are actually two of the older students living there that were hired by the town, and they are camp counselors. So that's a, you know, it was just really a, a very nice and successful story. And then I think I'll, I'll just conclude by mentioning that on July 17th, West Concord hosted leaders from the Massachusetts Cultural Council. And that was a great event. I think the, the impetus for that event came from our legislative delegations, representatives Cataldo and, and Gentile, who were instrumental in pulling that together. It was great to, to host quite a group and be able to showcase what West Concord in particular to, to our peers across the state. So I will stop. Actually, I'm not going to stop there. I'm going to mention that we have the MBTA Communities zoning the second session this Wednesday, July 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30. It is a virtual session, and the topic here is mapping and zoning to really dig in and, and see what this would look like. We had great participation in the first session, which really was to, to ground people and, and get an understanding of, of what this might mean. And this is, this session is to sort of dig in and, and start to see what it, what it might look like here in Concord, and I will stop there. Thank you.
On that last item, I, I was looking for that today on the calendar on the website, and as of, you know, 12 noon, it wasn't on. Yeah, if someone could post that right away. Thank you.
The information is on the MBTA Communities page.
Yeah.
But it's not on the calendar.
It needs to go on the calendar, definitely.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Liaison report, shall I go? Sure.
Okay.
We're going to go counterclockwise.
Okay. The ag committee is getting ready for Ag Day, which will be September 9th. But one of the issues that comes up for them is, you might remember in the April 2022 town meeting, we voted a paper bag fee of 10 cents that everyone who goes to the grocery store or a store has to pay for a bag and the vendor has to collect sales tax on that bag. So that is a burden for farmers, both in farm, in their farm stands and an ag day, because none of their produce is taxable, so they do not have cash registers. They don't have a means to collect sales tax. And in fact, most people don't even have, bring their own bags. So they're asking for the town to bring forward a, an amendment to that home rule petition article. So I met with Representative Cataldo, Chris Carmody, Mimi Grani today, and we are going to draft an amendment. And we're trying to find out, and that will be hopefully given to the, this actual home rule petition is still in committee at the state level. But as far as local approval, probably will have to go to town meeting. So we've got two things. Number one, there's an amendment at the state level, and then we're probably going to have the some. So that's what's happening with the ag committee's concern about paper bag fees and taxes on those fees.
But that bylaw has not yet been
That's right.
approved by the legislature.
That's right.
So it is not in effect at this time.
That's correct.
So they are okay for Ag Day?
We hope. Well, knowing how the legislature works, we're probably okay for a couple of years.
For this year.
Could be, could be.
And if they pass it now, it won't be in effect on.
It's the Attorney General.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they want to do the right thing.
Yes.
So they're thinking ahead. So, and we're, we're trying to help them out. Okay, I did go to the thing that Carrie mentioned, the the event hosted by Sami Cataldo that looked at the West Concord Cultural District and the executive director for the Mass Cultural Council was there. That was a great event. I if, I, I live in West Concord, and I wasn't aware of how rich our artist community is in West Concord. It really made me proud. It's just, we have just such a, a vibrant neighborhood. And so it was a great day. And the food was good, too. Other thing is the Economic Vitality Committee. On the other side, we're doing work, as you know, on Commonwealth Ave in West Concord. In the long run, this will be great because it's going to be infrastructure improvements, but in the meantime, the businesses are suffering a little bit of foot traffic. So we've got a passport, a passport piece. It's a, what do you call it? I don't know.
Motion.
No, it's not a, it's a oh, it's a promotion. It's a promotion, thank you. Where you can, there you go. Thank you. To encourage people to go and support the vendors during this Commonwealth reconstruction. And then I think that's it.
Thank you. Carrie?
All right. So I attended the showing of the movie Glory. And that was pretty well attended. And, and I've seen the movie before, but it was great to see it with all these fellow Concordians. It was great. I know the board is waiting to hear on the Act in Concord rec and on the Hanscom letter. However, tonight, the Act and Select Board is meeting. So then they will get back to us. And the same in Hanscom. The other towns are meeting, some of them tonight, some of them other night. So things are rolling along, but it's taking a few weeks. The Transportation Advisory Committee had a really good discussion of the Riverside Commons Project. And they have some suggested comments. And so when we get to that item later, one of my questions is whether the Select Board is supposed to be coordinating all the comments and how we're going to do that. For example, they'd like to see direct access to Route 2 to avoid congestion going through West Concord. They have an idea about an intersection reconfiguration. They have several really good ideas. So we want to figure out how to incorporate these.
This is the Transportation Committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
The 2229 Task Force and Main Street Oversight Committee both met together in a joint meeting and a site visit. That was very well attended. And the task force is working with Carrie and Mina and Chris to pretty soon come in with Mina's work plan. It will be coming up on a future agenda as soon as tomorrow night, the task force will finalize the scope of work. Then I think Mina will put some cost estimates, and then they'll be coming before us.
For those who don't know who Mina is, he is.
Town council, right. The HFAC, Hanscom Field Advisory Committee met and reported about the FAA updating noise policies. And that's an exciting development. They don't do that very often. So they are drafting a letter and public comments are due September 29th. Hanscom, it turns out, is the second busiest airport in New England and the only US airport that has two national resources abutting in. The Men at Man Park and the Great Meadows. So this is going to trigger a national environmental review and what they call a Section 106 review in addition to the MEPA that we've already commented on. So I guess we'll be hearing more about all of that. And that's it.
So is that a general review of noise or specific to the project?
There's two separate things.
Okay.
The FAA is redoing all their noise policies.
Okay.
And then the other thing is that there will be not only a MEPA State Environmental Review, but we think it's going to trigger a national EPA environmental review.
Bart? Yeah, so just two meetings to report on in this particular period since the last time we met. The Middle School Building Committee met on Thursday, the 20th. And the processes going forward, the, the foundations are being dug, the forms are being put in, rebar is being laid, and so pretty soon we should see things actually rising out of the ground. There's been minimal, minimal change orders, I think, a very small adjustment to some inspection contract, like $4,000 worth, it's just almost. But that process is, is now underway with the Technical Review Committee. contract, like $4,000 worth, it's just almost, but that process is is now underway with the Technical Review Committee coming up and and making sure that they're on top of things. Some of the schedules for the, for the payments and and the milestones for for actually assessing the progress are are all coming due. So by the next meeting, which is in a month, we should have a pretty full schedule of how the construction is going to go. So things are going well and moving fairly fast. If you haven't been by there, there's a lot of, lot of activity on the, on the site now as they, as they get fully ramped up into construction on the middle school. I also attended on the same day, in the evening, the Joint School Committee FinCom meeting. That was a unprecedented, to my knowledge, that that both those committees chose to get together at this stage of the year, in July, to to talk about their budget building process. Both committees presented the process that they typically go through, what they're looking for, the rationale for how they do, how they're doing the things. And what became very clear, too, was from the school department's perspective, there are quite a few, let's call it unusual or novel, issues to deal with. Specifically, the one they seem to be most concerned with is the gap in time that exists between the financial outlays associated with transportation of students from the, from the shelter facility and the point in time in which those same expenditures are expected to be fully reimbursed. And this, this could open up, the, the school could be behind by $200,000 to $300,000 by next June in terms of money that they've laid out that's coming back to them. So I think that was really appreciated by the Finance Committee, that they, they understand more about what that specific issue is. And so I was encouraged with that there's a, there's an active dialogue. I think, you know, both committees are to be commended for looking to work together and foster that understanding going forward this year.
I had a meeting with the Chair of the Public School Committee last week, and I think that was also the beginning of perhaps a better communication between the board and the school committee.
Yeah. It's encouraging.
Could I ask, Mark, did they talk about options to cover that transportation?
There are a few.
Yes.
Some of them involve drawing down reserves.
Yep.
And I think that there was more of a, we need some better options than the ones that are, that are immediately evident. Part, part of that is because if the schools obviously operate without too many, without enough reserves, or say they go into the Special Education Circuit Breaker or something like that, and then something else comes in, those are some of the things that led to Moody's warning on their credit rating several years ago. So that would, you know, potentially be less than desirable to do. And of course, we're dealing with something that's not so much an expenditure, but a timing issue. So I think that that those are important. Another issue that came up just in passing was, I think one of the Finance Committee members noted that the, the budget book for the school wasn't published this, this past year on this cycle. And of course, there's been change over there and and we were able to discuss the fact that that was actually a town meeting action, that that book would be published in the, I believe it was the 2012 Town Meeting. And so I think there, you know, there's, be more focus on how to, how to make sure that the school budget information is, is readily available to the public in, in a timely basis for Town Meeting this year.
Sounds like a really good dialogue.
I think so.
Right. I'm wondering about other towns that have recently gotten shelters and how they're solving it, because we're not the only ones, and maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah. That wasn't something that was discussed. Of course, the most communities that have these types of situations are either larger or have had them on an ongoing basis. It's the kind of thing where there's a ramp. Once you
Right.
have it going on an ongoing basis, then it rolls over year to year, similar to, to what happens with special education reimbursement.
Right.
And it's not quite such a concern.
But I was under the impression that several new shelters were created this year.
That may be true.
With the Healy Administration. So it might be worth finding out if anybody's figured out something creative to do with this.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Yeah. Linda?
Okay. We ready to move on?
Linda.
Oh, Linda, yes. Linda?
Yeah, thank you. I certainly have. I attended the White Pond Advisory Task Force. And to their credit, they're really digging in on the charge in terms of doing outreach to various segments that were identified in the, in the, in their charge. And they're working with Donna McIntosh from Communications on that work. CPC met and spent a fair amount of time discussing their draft agreement regarding Warner's Pond and examining, reviewing, I should say, previous awards that have been made by CPC to Warner's Pond, as well as the understanding for this year's award, given the public forums and so forth that'll be held. So there was a lot of discussion on that. They also spent time on closeouts. And closeouts to them means grants that were previously, previously awarded in other years and have now completed their work and are required to submit final reports. So and any balance in their funding that they did not spend. So they spent time reviewing that. They also discussed the Concord Municipal Housing, Affordable Housing Trust's request to consider CPC designating a certain amount of money each year to CP, to the, the trust for housing, which is certainly a category that they could do if they chose. And many of the CPCs in other towns do that. And that was a preliminary discussion that they had. And I think the preliminary feeling was that they wanted to keep the flexibility of being able to address projects that came before them and cited various projects that have come before them in the past that were of substantial amount of money, sometimes over a period of years. So I, I think that may be an ongoing discussion, but it was a good first discussion. I also attended the Affordable Housing Trust meeting. And they're doing, they're giving credit to the other housing groups who almost always have representatives also in, as members of the public attending, so that they're keeping up to speed with the various issues that are being discussed. And there's an upcoming roundtable of all the housing groups on August 14th at 7 o'clock. And each of the housing groups is being asked to identify at that meeting various projects and efforts that they've made towards addressing the Housing Production Plan goals. So stay tuned for that. And also, you know, the Planning Board this year is also invited to that meeting as well as the Select Board. And I think we, as the Select Board, are important actors to be present to the extent that we can be at that Housing Production, Housing Roundtable Meeting. I also attended the ZBA, was a very active evening. And they're looking, they're in the process of, they've just, they need a fifth member. And they're in the process of considering an applicant that just came to their attention. And I think that's the highlights.
Thank you.
Do you have, do you have any liaison?
No, I don't.
Okay.
We're waiting for the next item on the agenda. But Carrie is getting chairs. I guess the chairman, I should be getting the chairs, right?
No, you're fine.
No?
That chair is available.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah. And though, well.
No, we could probably actually arrange this room in a different way and get more people seated here. We were talking about another months ago about rearranging this room.
Yeah.
This is a good room, and if we had to move into the other room, the acoustics are still questionable.
It, it's difficult for us on the fly.
So, but if we were to
Yeah.
take that, that road.
We certainly can take a moment if you would like to do that. There are a couple of people in the hearing room.
There are.
There are.
Well, we have, we have three seats here, and we don't, and four seats. So, and we could fit in the more, a few more chairs and so everybody can be here. This is a nice problem to have.
I think we're holding open one or two of those for speakers on the next talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
He can manage that.
Yeah.
That'll be shifting.
So if, if you could just pause for a minute, we will bring a few more chairs in.
That's right.
We're making it. Open that other door further.
Stage crew is at work.
The roadies. Roadies.
I think everybody else is staff.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think that some of the people who came, I thought the meetings started at 7. Well, I don't know if we have time. Maybe we could have a few more minutes for.
No. No, we've, our, um, meetings for the last, what, six months have started at 6 o'clock and that's the, so, but we, so anyway, once everybody gets seated, we can then start the bus again.
I think we're up to Giraud Park.
Yes.
Yeah.
Waiting, just waiting to.
Sit here then.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's go on with the next item, which is the Town Manager's Report on the Status of the, what?
We got one here and one here.
And one there. Three chairs.
Three.
Okay.
All right.
One right there.
We can, this is not. This is not, this is not like a bus. It's like a school bus where we can't, we can't start the bus until everybody is seated and their seatbelt on. So, but let's just go ahead and people can listen while they're standing up if necessary. It's harder for them to fall asleep.
All right. Thank, thank you and good evening again. I apologize, had we known so many people were coming this evening, we could have set up in the other, the other room, which is unfortunate. But I wanted to start by just mentioning that this item, the Status of Giraud Park, is, is just an update. There's no action for the board to take, but we wanted to, to come to you because we now have a, a solution to go forward. And we know that you and members of the public have had questions about the, the project and what's going on. So we thought this would be a good opportunity. I do want to introduce some of the staff that's here that is, is working, has been working and will be working on, on the Giraud project. So Gail Dowd, who is our outgoing Chief Financial Officer, had the unenviable job of being handed this project to attempt to complete when she started with us full time last September. Alan Cathcart, who is our Director of Public Works, maybe has the unenviable task of being, receiving this project to take it across the finish line. Deputy Town Manager Megan Zamuto is here. She's been involved in this project. And I know our Town Engineer Steve Dukren is here. I don't know if he's here for this project or another item, but we'll take the opportunity to introduce him. And Joe Cormier, our Assistant Public Works Engineer, who I know is not here for this item, but for another, but he's here, so we'll introduce him as well. So Giraud Park is, and the, the acquisition of the property, this is something that's been going on for a long time now. Probably about four years or so ago, the town acquired the property and then engaged in a, in a process to identify what types of improvements the community might like to see at this particular property. It was always envisioned to be more of a passive use park, but there definitely was interest from some community members and I think some of our former staff in having a more active use at the park as well. And it, it's adjacent to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail to Warner's Pond and a real gem in West Concord. So the first phase of the project really was for passive use. So to put into some, some parking, to clean up the property, to create a pavilion and, and some picnic areas, again, adjacent to the, to the trail, so a nice opportunity for people who were using the trail to, to come off the trail and, and maybe have a picnic or so. So the town, through a series of town meetings, appropriated some funds for the development of Phase 1. And we also acquired some CPC funds for the development of Phase 1. And thank, thanks to Mary Hartman, she pointed out, there is a typo in, in the report. There was actually, it, it is $1.6 million for improvements. One, it's actually 1.4 of capital. It was 1.2 originally for, for Giraud, and then we pulled an additional $200,000 from, from a park appropriation to, to meet the, the contract, the bids for the contract. So I apologize for that total of, of 4.6 million, three for acquisition and 1.6 million for the Phase 1 improvements. And so we had two contracts for Phase 1 development. The first, just, just for ease of following, I'm going to refer to as the park contract and the second, the restroom contract. And it's important to note that we bid the two projects under two different sections of state procurement law. So there, the state procurement law can be complicated for, there are different laws that, that guide the, the process and procedure for different types of procurement, whether it's goods and services, whether it's construction, you know, whether it's, it's horizontal construction or vertical construction. So the park contract was bid under the Horizontal Construction Statute, which, which is Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 39m. That piece of the project was awarded to Coal Construction and the bid price there was about $1.2 million. And that was for for the improvements that were made to the land and later for the, the foundation for the, the restroom building. So that, that was one project. The Notice of Award, which is the, the authorization of, of the project under the way that municipal procurement operates, was issued on, in April of 2021. And that project, the park project, is what is still incomplete. And, and I'll get back to that in a moment. The second contract, which was the restroom contract, was awarded under the Vertical Construction Statute. That's Chapter 1, Mass General Law, Chapter 149. Awarded under that contract because it was a building in excess of $150,000. That was awarded to Marino Construction. That contract was $380,750. The Notice of Award was issued in July of 2021, and that project is complete. Now, you heard earlier in the meeting that the restroom is yet to be connected, yet to be issued a certificate of compliance, a certificate of occupancy, and yet to be connected. But the contract, the requirements of the contract that were awarded to Marino, those elements have been fulfilled. And that contract has been signed off on. So the issue, the issue with the park contract is, it's, it's complex. So this contract was awarded during COVID. I don't think it's a stretch to say it was awarded to a company and a project manager that had limited experience, particularly in working in municipal contracting. And I think we've probably all had an experience. And I think we've probably all had an experience where we've hired a contractor to do something. You may have even signed a contract. Things change. The the price of something changes. Um, and they just changed the contract, right? How I I know in in my own experience that has happened. Um. In the municipal world, it it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. You sign a contract. Um, all of the terms of the contract are explicitly stated, and that's what you have to stick to. And some contracts have fuel escalation uh, built into them and and others don't. And and the price of fuel can change, and that can dramatically affect the cost of of the project. And if there's no fuel escalation, just as an example, then the town is not going to pay a pay a change order for fuel escalation. And that that's something that we saw here. Um. And if you, if you don't, if you are a contractor uh, doing municipal work and you don't do a satisfactory job, it gets reported to the state and the state maintains a database of contractors. And so it's very important for um, anybody who works in municipal contracting to understand what they're getting into and do a good job because there are repercussions going forward. If um, if you when the when the town fills out the evaluation form and it's and it's not favorable for the contractor, that is going to stick with the contractor in municipal uh, in the municipal world for a very long time. So back in July of 2022, uh, not long after, actually before Gail had started with us full time, but she was here with us on a part time basis, the first thing that she faced, or one of the first things, was that the contractor submitted a claim to the town uh, for what the contractor identified as cost overruns, about 270,000 dollars. And um, identified those generally as price escalation, supply chain issues, et cetera. And I think at several points over the last several months, the question has come up to this board, and I've mentioned to you that the issues that we were facing were supply chain cost escalation. I never said we were paying those because we we weren't. We we rejected that claim. And that was, excuse me, that was the start of of the issue, the issues that we had with the contractor. Um, the so we we talked that through with the contractor, um, asked for some additional clarification on a few of the items that we thought there might be a case for. The contractor actually came back the next month with a with a proposal for a um, change order in a high, a slightly higher amount. And um, we identified the things that we thought might be payable under the contract, asked for some additional documentation. And um, then when we had not received that in October, Gail reached out to town council and town council requested or suggested advised, opined that we should issue a notice of default. And that's what we did. And honestly, from October 2022, really until June, very little progress on very little forward momentum in resolving the claim with the contractor. Um, we did have, we we do have a um a proposed solution, and I I think I probably will just turn to Gail to talk about um how we're going to or or the agreement that we have worked out.
Yes, thank you. Um, we have been working very closely with Coal Contracting on this. They did come back in mid-June, I want to say around June fourteenth, with a proposal for a change order. And it relates to when we were building the bathroom structure, there was a request made to make sure that the materials matched on both the bathroom and the pavilion. They have come back with the change order for what it will cost on the pavilion to match the material on the bathroom. So we have been going through that. I've been working recently with Alan and his group to review it, to make sure we have all of the supporting documentation. But we now are in a very good place to be able to move forward because these are changes that are allowable under the contract. We've compared what the original costs were to what they're coming back with to make sure we can fully reconcile the items. And we're now looking forward to being able to move forward with reactivating everybody and getting it to completion. They have the contractor and all the materials all picked out and ready to go. So we are very close to being able to remobilize and continue with it. And then to go through the final checklist to make sure that the walkways and everything, the signage and everything is completed. And all of that money is still sitting on the contract. There are still some of those closeout steps that we have that we have not paid out yet. So they still have some of that additional work as well to complete. But we have, we've worked with them closely and have a plan in place that we should be able to move on in the near future.
Are we done with the?
Yeah.
Presentation.
Questions.
Questions? So uh, thank you for that. Um, it's really helpful to hear what's happening at Juroe, all in the in the whole story. Um, the last thing you just mentioned, the um, possible agreement to match these materials. Is that going to be a substantial cost and we will need another appropriation?
No, it does. It fits within all of the appropriations we currently have.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question. I've heard a lot of talk about, you know, the siding and the foundation and things like that. When I walked there, the thing I noticed is that there's a lot of dead plants around. Have those been addressed as well in your negotiations with Coal?
That is part of the original agreement. We will be continuing those discussions. They are aware of that. As part of the original agreement, they were responsible for the plants for the first year of the planting. So we have had those discussions as well.
And so do you think they're part of the the work they're going to do within this 1.2 million?
Yes.
And I've got a follow up question. Do so when this is done, and and thank you for this work that you've done because it's been a long slog, and that's a beautiful piece of property. It's good to see. Um, who who within the town is going to maintain that? Because it seemed to be unclear who was really running.
No, it's not.
Great question. Uh, thank you. Alan Cathcart, Director, Public Works. Um, yeah, Gail has done a great job to get us to this point.
Yeah.
Public Works is picking this up to, with a lot of support from Steve Dukeren, the engineering um, division, as well as Aaron McClosco from Highway Grounds, who does a lot of maintenance of parks and very familiar with the kind of vegetative needs, issues, the paths, that sort of thing. And then John Stragas is still with uh, the Facilities Group. And it's worth noting that uh, at the request of the town manager, we've been sort of working to transition the facilities team in towards, you know, Public Works. So we'll be providing some direction oversight. And uh, so in essence, uh, facilities will be uh, you presently a department, whatever, maybe a division within Public Works at some point. But they'll be working with our engineering team, our Highway Grounds team, and we'll be owning the uh, the maintenance of keeping that facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Good news. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so now we know what the status is and where we're going from here. Thank you. Everything should be good, right?
Yeah.
Public Works will be having a sort of another uh, where Steve has already reached out to the design engineer, the contractor, to try and coordinate a meeting so we can make sure the plan of work and schedule of work are, you know, better defined. And then we can kind of share that once we have that information.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
This is, since there's really no action to be taken here, this is just a report where I don't think we're going to entertain um questions or comments. We usually just reserve that for items that the board is going to take action on.
Thank you.
So um, we'll move on to the um next item, which is the amendments to the traffic management uh, program. And we have some materials in the meeting package, and we thank you for not presenting us with the PowerPoint.
Okay, now Steve Dukeren, Town Engineer. And I have at me Joe Cormier, Public Works Engineer. Um, let me start by addressing the board to let them know exactly what we're doing here, uh, especially for the new members and the public. Uh, the why this is coming for the board. Um, according to Mass General Law, chapter forty, section twenty two, the select board has control over traffic upon the streets in the town. And uh, the regulations were first adopted in nineteen sixty seven by this board. And they have been updated periodically over the years, the last one being in twenty fifteen. Uh, so that's uh, the regulations that are called traffic, parking and pedestrian rules and regulations. And um, under another MGL, it's chapter eighty five. Uh, towns must use what we call MUTCD, the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is a federal highway standard um, that is applied nationally uh, with regards to signs, signals, striping, et cetera. And uh, the state of Massachusetts, under that same Mass General Law, amends the MUTCD and and allows the town or requires the towns to use the amended version and and in so doing, we're able to get local requirements included in the regulations. Alright, so that's the role um, of the board. So any amendment to the regulations like we presented tonight, would we have, would have to be approved by this board. I'll turn it over to Joe. Um, we have three different regular uh, parts of regulations that we need to be addressed, and uh, you'll take one at a time.
Um, the the first regulation is to increase uh, the no parking restriction on Hubbard Street um, between uh, Stowe Street and Thoreau Street um, on the northwest side. Um, currently, there's, there's no parking restrictions in this section of Hubbard Street. Um, there is a, there is a parking restrictions on the northwest side of Hubbard Street between Stowe and Walden Street. Um, prior to the construction of of Hubbard Street that was completed in in the fall of twenty two. Um, vehicles could park on on each side of the street and utilize the grass strip in the shoulder of the road, um, which allowed vehicles to to kind of park off the surface of the paved roadway. Um, and allowed for ample width for two lane traffic, um, and emergency vehicle access. Um, but since the reconstruction, um, we installed granite curving throughout the whole entire length of the street, um, which did not allow cars to park off the roadway. Um, so the 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 travel lane width was reduced. Um, and uh, there was difficulties for for two lane traffic passing through and emergency vehicle access. Um, so this amendment would again reduce uh, the no parking restrictions on the northwest side of Hubbard Street between Thoreau and Stowe Street.
Both sides?
Just, just the northwest side.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that the side the post office is on?
It is. It is. So part of this restrict, uh, part of this amendment too would 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 fix inconsistencies between the written regulation and the posted reg- regulation. Um, on the existing side, it's already no parking. So right now between the um, between the municipal exit and uh, and Stowe Street, uh, Walden Street, rather, there's posted restrictions there now that aren't in the regulation. So part of this amendment would fix that.
So I'm a little confused because you have Schedule One parking restrictions.
Yep.
And then you have Schedule One B parking meter locations.
So the that that there is is the parking meter location is eliminating a duplicate regulation that's in there. So we're, we're removing a a parking meter line that was duplicated.
So on the southeast side, we're going to keep the meters. Is that right?
Correct.
And on the other one, um, the northwest side, is that going to that's just going to have no parking? So it's not going to have any meters?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. I should have been more clear about that. So right now, that 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 regulation there is, it's posted right now with signage that say no parking, but it's not in the right, in the regulation. So it can't be enforceable unless it's in the regulation. So we're, we're trying to fix that inconsistency here as well.
So are there meters there that have to be removed?
Nope, nope. There's, there's no meters there.
Okay.
Okay. So you're saying there'll be no parking on either side of Hubbard Street on the northwest side? Do I understand?
So the entire length of Hubbard Street between Walden Street and Thoreau Street, there'll be no parking.
Okay. Are you, do you have plans to stripe it for the, a bike lane?
No, we do not.
Why not?
Uh.
Part of the complete street idea that the town is.
Let me answer that. So um, during um, the design of the project and even during the construction, we have we had neighborhood meetings and um, we discussed what we can do in the street regarding striping and uh, ninety percent of the neighbors attended, and they all said that they didn't want any striping. Uh, so we put off that decision.
On the public street?
It is the public street.
And the town has a commitment to complete streets?
Um, yes, we do. But I think at this point in time, we are meeting all the obligations with regards to the complete streets agreement that we've had with the state. Um, it is a good idea to stripe it, to make accommodations for bicycles. But we are deferring that decision to after we complete a complete, uh, the transportation study and get a recommendation from the consultant that's been hired.
Okay, so I I I think Mary's bringing up a really good point. I was going to ask a similar question. Have you had any input on these recommendations from the Transportation Advisory Committee? Because they are the ones working with the consultant on the transportation study. They're the ones who are going to prioritize about bike lanes and sidewalks and 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 complete streets. So have you had any contact with them on these recommendations?
So these um, issues were brought to the traffic management group.
Right.
And uh, these are the recommendations that came from that group.
Right.
The comprehensive transportation study hasn't begun yet.
Right.
There isn't a contract.
Um. So so you haven't had any input from the Transportation Advisory Committee on these recommendations?
Not from that committee. Um, I don't know if the, it's the role of that committee to give input to to these uh, changes in regulations. Maybe it is. Um, however, with regard to this particular issue of striping Hubbard Street, that could be done later on. Uh, that would not affect what we're trying to accomplish today regarding the parking.
Okay. So this is one of three. Okay, let's move on to number two.
Um, so the the second one is to also in- increase the no parking restriction along Munson Road on the western side. Um, excuse me, the eastern side of Munson Road in front of number uh, house number one seventy four. Um, this was brought up um, due to an increase of parking in front of the great um, the Great Meadows uh, refuge site. Um, it was brought to our attention from the police and fire as as far as responding. Um, vehicles are parked on a, on the curve um, on the eastern side of the street, which reduces sightlines, um, which was a safety issue. Um, so this was also brought to the traffic management group, and they brought um, and they recommended that we restrict parking on the eastern side. Um, currently, right now, on the western side of the street, there is no parking there. Um, and that would remain the same.
Okay. Any questions about that from the board?
It's about a hundred and fifty foot stretch of of no parking.
So that's a safety issue on Munson Road because of the parking for Great Meadows?
Correct.
Okay. And that's because you have to pay to park in Great Meadows Parking Lot?
That could be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And what, okay, number three?
Um, number three is a a one-way restriction on Seven Star Lane. Um, so this, this has been posted out there for several, for several years. I don't know the exact history. I know it has been posted out there. Um, but there's been a no, a no outlet sign posted on the intersection of Seven Star Lane and Ornak, and a do not enter sign at the intersection of Seven Star Lane and Sudbury Road. Um, so this amendment would put this into their written regulation, so it could be. So this amendment would put this into their written regulation, so it could be enforceable. And the reason it's being recommended is because vehicles leaving Seven Star Lane, turning onto Sudbury Road, there's there's no the proper sightlines aren't there to make a proper decision to be able to pull out on the Sudbury Road due to not being able to see oncoming traffic.
I have a few questions about this one. So it says appropriate signage will be installed. What do you have in mind for that?
So that there would be additional signage for for a no outlet on the on the Ornac side? I believe there's just one sign out there right now.
Yeah, and it's not very easily seen.
Yeah, yeah, I don't and I I don't think people obey it right now, and that's probably half the reason why. And then there would there would also be additional signage on the westerly side of Seven Star Lane.
Okay, well, I live in that neighborhood, and I've seen and talked to delivery trucks, contractors, town vehicles, and children riding their bicycles to Willard School. And they're all using the street the wrong way. So I think we need to figure out. One of the delivery truck guys I talked to, he came in the right way, but then he was leaving again. So he was delivering appropriately to someone in the neighborhood, and he didn't know that it was one way going out that other way. Okay, so we have to figure out how to deal with this. And the same with landscapers. They come to the house that they're supposed to do, and then they're coming out the wrong way. And then there's Bike to School Program, where we've encouraged a lot of people to have their kids ride bikes to school. And Willard School is right there. So I think, again, I really think this should go to the Transportation Advisory Committee and really think this through. How are we going to put the right signs? And how are we going to enforce it? And make sure we don't have an accident with a child on a bicycle or whoever.
Sure, okay.
I'm wondering if there's a rush on the back to Hubbard Street now because I feel that the town has miles and miles of roads. And we in many of our roads are in bad shape. And the town invested quite a bit of money to do a very good job on Hubbard Street with the the concrete granite curbs, right? And here we are, we're thinking of restricting parking without getting any kind of cooperation around the striping for a bike lane. So I'm wondering, can we delay this until we find out what's what's the the Transportation Advisory Board can help us with getting this done? Because this is something, again, the town has committed to the Complete Streets Program. So it feels like maybe we should delay.
I think there's, I think there's a good, if I understand what's being presented here, it's fairly technical, and it has to do with enforceability of rules that are largely already in place, given the signage that's there now. For example, no parking on one side of Hubbard Street is already signed, and people think that it's enforceable, but it's not.
That that is true for a portion of it. A portion of it, we are proposing a new a new regulation between Stowe and Thoreau Street. That that is a new regulation that's putting is getting putting to place that's not posted currently.
It's not posted currently.
The section between the the municipal lot and Walden Street Exit and Walden Street that is posted right now and we're trying to fix that inconsistency with this amendment as well.
And and striping the road doesn't have any effect on these regulations.
Correct.
And the regulations are an improvement. And is there any reason to delay the regulations in order to use that as a?
Is it a regulation? Then why are we voting if it's a it's it's there's some discretion here?
We have no, we have to vote to approve these regulations.
We have to put the regulations in place.
Right.
But I think that I think the staff is is hearing fairly clearly that we'd like to see the Traffic Management Group weigh in on the sign and Traffic Advisory Committee.
Right.
Way in on striping and signage in future plans that come forward like this. But doesn't affect our ability to move ahead here.
Well, what I would suggest is Munson Road seems like everyone's okay with. I would go well to vote for that one. Hubbard Street, we might need some more discussion. But definitely, I don't think that Seven Star Lane is ready because of all the details that haven't been worked out with the bicycles and the contractors. And even town vehicles are going on it the wrong way. And we need to get some more detail of how the signage is going to look and how it will be enforced.
I think that actually what's being presented to us is is three different areas where there are public safety concerns. The rationale for the Hubbard Street changes are because the sort of narrowing of the road is a result of the construction that Mary was just talking about. Really, I mean, I'd hate to have the situation be that, you know, we had some emergency in the center of town there and ended up with vehicles parked in a way that that made it difficult for vehicles to.
Right. How about if we take them one at a time? If we take a vote on Munson Road, and then we take a vote on Hubbard Street, and would that be all right? We take.
If we can do anything we want, just for the Select Board. But I I'm not sure.
Linda has a comment.
Linda? Yes.
Yeah, thank you. You know, if I understood correctly, I remember going to some public opportunity for us to weigh in on the Complete Streets. Complete Streets also came to the Select Board at one point. And there is a plan that's been approved. And and if I understood Steve Dokern today, they there are only so many items that are in that plan that have been approved at this point that they're working on. This is not one of them. That doesn't mean that precludes us looking at this going to in the future. So I'm certainly open, particularly on the Hubbard Street, that that in the future, separate from this issue today, going to the Transportation Committee to 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 look at that as appropriate and as presented by the Public Works Department. But I would not like to see it interfere with us acting on these safety issues today.
Right. So.
That makes sense.
All right.
So Mr. Chair, we did separate them so that we expect that you will vote on each one individually.
So do we want to go one by one?
Yeah.
Okay, good, so let's, do we hear a motion on?
Okay, move to approve the Hubbard Street Amendment recommended by the Traffic Management Group to the traffic parking and pedestrian rules and regulations as included in the Select Board Meeting Packet.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, aye, with a strong recommendation that you bring it to the Transportation Advisory Board. Okay, move to approve the Munson Road Amendment recommended by the Traffic Management Group to the traffic parking and pedestrian rules and regulations as included in the Select Board Meeting Packet.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Move to approve the Seven Star Lane Amendment recommended by the Traffic Management Group to the traffic parking and pedestrian rules and regulations as included in the Select Board Meeting Packet.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
No.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, no.
That that is that passes. Thank you very much. And just it just the message, I think, is clear that there needs to be a little bit more. I know that you I think you were probably very you were very diligent in getting input from the residents of Hubbard Street in particular. And I know they did not want striping of any kind. And so you did your best to accommodate them, but you can see that we got a cranky bunch here.
We are. Thank you.
All right. Okay, that takes care of the traffic. Now we have to take care of the conservation restrictions for Hosmer Meadow. Is that right?
I saw Delia here.
There she is. I think the first thing you have to tell us is where Hosmer Meadow is.
I will do that. Good evening, Natural Resources Director Delia Kaye. Here to discuss the two.
Pull the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You and so that all the people who aren't here can hear you.
Delia Kaye, Natural Resources Director, and here to discuss the two conservation restrictions at Hosmer Meadow. And Shannon, if you were able to pull that up on the screen. Hosmer Meadow is behind the new McCallor Lane, which is at the top of, so the red outlines are Lot One and Lot Two of proposed conservation restrictions. And the green hatch is an existing conservation restriction. You can see the commuter rail to the north. And the site is that's Main Street to the south in the vicinity of where the turnoff is to Old Road to Nine Acre Corner. The medical buildings are in that vicinity there. McCallor Lane is a new construction of a four-lot subdivision that was approved under a superseding order of conditions. And as part of that permit process, there was a requirement for to for one conservation restriction to be placed over the rear of the parcel as those parcels became subdivided to be constructed for two of the four subdivision lots. The state asked for the CRs to be separate. So Lot One is the one acre conservation restriction. It is one point zero six acres. And then the one to the west covers eight point five eight acres. And these were reviewed by the Natural Resources Commission at their July nineteenth meeting and accepted by the commission. And the reasons for the president for the recommendation for the Select Board to approve these restrictions is for the preservation of wetlands, floodplain, soil health, water quality, and the scenic and natural character of the town. So we would look to have the Select Board approve these two conservation restrictions that were a condition of the wetlands permit and have been approved by the Natural Resources or accepted by the Natural Resources Commission with a recommendation for Select Board approval.
Was this a restriction, was this a condition of approving the subdivision that there be such a?
It was.
And that the planning board imposed that?
The Natural Resources Commission included that in their order of conditions, which was subsequently appealed and then upheld by Department of Environmental Protection.
So there's a history.
Yes.
And this is adjacent to the railroad tracks?
It is. The conservation restrictions that that's one of the Lot Two, it's its northern boundary.
We have any questions about this?
So we're simply formalizing an agreement that's already been made with the owners?
It can't be made without Select Board and state approval. The state has reviewed this and recommended it's ready for local signature. So there's a three-step process. The grantor has to agree to give it, or it is a requirement of a permit, or it's a CPA requirement for land acquisitions and housing. And then it it goes to if the NRC is the grantee, the land trust can be the grantee, any, you know, nonprofit or municipal land protection organization. And then the Select Board always has to approve any CR that is granted in the town of Concord, and then the state.
This is a statutory conservation restriction that requires the signature of the Select Board and the Commissioner of Environmental Affairs, right?
Correct, yes. So if you would like the statute, it is.
No, we don't. Okay, just that's it's a statutory conservation restriction.
Correct.
No public access, is that true?
There is no public access. And I know that's something that we work really hard to get on our conservation restrictions. It's very challenging on this site because it is basically behind people's homes. And there's no way to for people to park there. So it's basically, you know, the the four lots are off McCallor. And Lot Two is the largest of the four lots. So Lots Three and Four are underneath Lot Two. But if that makes sense, so north of McCallor, so north of McCallor Lane up to the so no, no, so keep.
North is down.
North is up. I'm sorry, so McCallor Lane is the southern. So, okay, sorry, Lot Two, where it's close to McCallor Lane. In between Lot Two and McCallor Lane and left of Lot One and below Lot Two are Lots Three and Four.
Oh, wow.
So the only benefit would be if the property owner had granted permission for Lots Three and Four to have access, but that was not part of the conversation. And so that's not that's not provided.
Okay.
So kind of a dumb question. What is the purpose of having a conservation restriction if there's no access?
We, as I said, we do really try hard to get public access. But there's also, you know, the protection of the wetlands, the floodplain, the groundwater and the restriction of any future development. A lot of that is wetland and so would be restricted from future development just in accordance with Wetlands Protection Act regulations. But there are other values. The state won't accept a concert or they won't approve a CR that doesn't have some public benefits.
Right.
So those public benefits of wetland preservation, floodplain, soil health, groundwater, and the, you know, open and scenic preservation are considered, you know, conservation values.
I assume was to actually avoid more intense development of that area.
Correct.
And just out of curiosity, what's the status of the lot that's left of Lot, west of Lot Two and sort of between there and Route Two?
It's privately owned by the, I forget which property it is, but it's 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 a the frontage, there's a house on Main Street very close to Route Two that has a very narrow strip of frontage, and then it it expands and and contains all of that lands behind that property.
It's neither protected nor public.
Correct, it's very wet.
Very wet, okay.
And there's no access from Route Two because of the guardrails? I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not to mention the bypass zone. Yeah, okay. Is there any reason we shouldn't approve this? Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve a conservation restriction over one point zero six acres of land at twenty-four McCallor Lane from Cuca, did I pronounce that right? Cuca Road LLC granted on June fifth, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three to Natural Resource Commission, shown as conservation restriction area on Lot One on a plan titled Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts for Cuca Road LLC, last revised June fourteen, twenty twenty-three, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Section thirty-one through thirty-three of Chapter one eighty-four.
Is there a second?
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you very much.
Second, there's another motion.
There is another one?
There is.
Lot Two.
There are two.
Okay.
There are two, okay. Move to approve a conservation restriction over eight point five eight acres of land at thirty-eight McCallor Lane for Morgan Burke Cutler Irrevocable Trust, granted on June fifth, twenty twenty-three to the Natural Resource Commission, shown as conservation restriction area on Lot Two on a plan titled Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts for Cuca Road LLC, last revised June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Section thirty-one through thirty-three of Chapter one eighty-four.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Now, can I thank you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Delia, how long has this been in the works?
Several years. I'm going to say that the permit was, and this this is stretching the memory, Linda. I'm going to say that the permit was originally issued three years ago. Actually, longer than that, because then it was appealed. So then that appeal probably took a year, maybe not quite that long, but it's been going going on for some time. The council for the developers here, Rachel Watzke, and I I don't know if she is prepared to respond to that a little bit more eloquently.
I just wanted to appreciate all that's been involved in this, getting to this point. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we do have a comment.
We do.
Yeah.
Oh, we should have heard that before we voted. Oh, we should have heard that before we voted, shouldn't we?
Well, it's Rachel Watzke.
Good evening. I just was responding to Ms. Escobedo's question about the timing of this. From my recollection, I believe this was first approved by the NRC in 2017. It was appealed and received in superseding order of conditions in 2018 and hasn't been in development since that point. I first I believe was communicating with Delia about the drafting of the conservation restrictions back in 2021. And unfortunately, the state lost its primary reviewer of the draft CRs in 20, end of 2021, and they basically were unable to do any review for about a year. So it's it's been quite an effort to keep this moving.
Thank you for that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. That would not have, that would not have affected our vote, would it?
No.
No.
No. Unless we wanted to hold it up even longer.
I appreciate you taking the time to look at this and appreciate your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we move on to the Baker Avenue project and the first, the first part of the presentation is going to be from our Liz Russ from the housing coordinator. Is that what I should call you, housing?
Hi, I'm Liz Russ. I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office.
Good. And you're gonna, and you are going to educate us briefly, as briefly as possible about what, what the responsibilities are with our responsibilities are with regard to Chapter 40B and the application that's going to be pending before the town boards on this project.
Good evening. I'm glad to do that. I provided some material. I think it's in the packet. And by request, I'm not going to go through the materials, but I think it's there for everyone to see, which might provide more, more information. So Chapter 40B is, of course, our affordable housing law. It, you know, it's a very short few sentences in the actual Massachusetts general law, but there's very clear guidelines under 760 CMR 56. And that's for anyone who wants to look up really the details of how it works and how the municipal process works, how the ZBA process works, and what are the responsibilities of the subsidizing agency and the developer. And those are the key parties here. So we have the municipality, which is of course you, the select board, and the zoning board, which is the permit issuing agency. We have the subsidizing agencies who really approve the project overall and the developer. So it starts with the eligibility. The developer applies to the subsidizing agency for authorization for approval to proceed. There are four subsidizing agencies that do this work. There's Mass Development and CDAC, that's most uncommon. EOHLC, which is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We might remember them as DHCD back in the day. And they issue the 40B eligibility, and that's often used for when you are over the 10% or in a safe harbor. And 40Bs often used in that situation for purely zoning purposes. So sometimes that, you know, you need the zoning or you need other things that the 40B process will allow. And that's really Concord has mostly seen 40Bs under the LIP 40B. Some people know that as the friendly 40B. That's the 40B process that is issued under the EOHLC. But it's the same, it's legislated the same, it's regulated exactly the same. And then Mass Housing is the subsidizing agency for this particular project. And that's more than regular 40Bs, the NEF 40Bs, the unfriendly 40Bs, some people call them. But of course, they don't need to be friendly or unfriendly. It's really a cooperative process on both parties, the municipality and the developer. All the successful projects have the most cooperation between everyone to get what they need out of the project. So the subsidizing agency, when they are looking at the project eligibility, they're looking at it really from the big picture. Does the applicant have site control? Are there, does it generally eligible under the, you know, is it a qualifying development entity? And as part of that process, there is the opportunity for the town to issue comments, and that's what's going on right now. So the town is in this public comment period. And so what Mass Housing is looking for in this period is, you know, big red flags, like we really can't stand this project. We have major issues. There's been 10 40B proposals on this site. There's, you know, we're, you know, whatever those may be. So, but generally the smaller kinds of concerns they really expect and the town would want that those are really addressed at the local level. They have no interest in coming to talk to you about, you know, like, well, where the sidewalk should go or like what other kinds of things. So but it is an opportunity to raise issues and put them on the table. Not to resolve the issues, but to raise them if you have major concerns. And that's what they're looking for. And that's what you're doing now, right? So you've.
As whether, the only issue for them is whether or not they approve the subsidies for the project.
Well, no, they, it's not even the money. So they have seven parts of the standard of their approval. Like, is it eligible under the program? Is the site generally available? Is the conceptual design generally appropriate? Does the project seem feasible, given comparable rents and sales prices? So, you know, the applicant has to put in their financial numbers, so they check that out. Is the applicant eligible? Is it feasible, giving land valuation, profit limitations, program requirements? And does the applicant have site control? They don't need to see that all the sources of funds, which some of them might be subsidies, some of them might be developer equity, some of them might be permanent financing. They don't need to see those commitment letters, like, do you have all the money all wrapped up? Because it's a long process, right? This is just the beginning. And then you have to go through the permitting. And once the permit is in hand, no funder is going to to make any commitment until you have your permit, right? Because the projects look a little bit different at the end of the permit. Sometimes you don't even get the permit, right? So, but they definitely look different than than now. The conceptual plans that are being developed now are conceptual. And the permit issued plans are much more specific. So, so it's an idea of what the project financing might look like.
So, so Liz, I just want to clarify. I've heard some concerns and there's, there's a lot of support from the Transportation Advisory Committee, but they had some very specific ideas like the size of the garage, the intersection configuration, and direct access to Route Two, so there's not more traffic congestion in West Concord. Are these considered major concerns or?
Okay, so they're. These, these are, these are things that are totally appropriate to come up during the hearing.
During the ZBA hearing.
During the ZBA hearing.
Got it. Thank you very.
So, once the project eligibility letter is issued, a number of things. So that's really like the ticket to the ZBA. Like, okay, you've gone through, the project is eligible. At that point, the, the town, the municipality can apply to Mass Housing Partnership for technical assistance. So that can't happen until the project eligibility happens, which would be appropriate. You want to make sure that the project's, you know, going to be able to move forward. And so that the town can be assigned a 40B consultant to do any kind of education with the ZBA, to kind of be impartial advisor, to assist the ZBA and what what are some standards that they could employ? The ZBA will also have the ability to hire their own peer reviewers at that point. So traffic is, of course, something that everyone always is interested in. The developer will have their traffic person, the town will have their traffic person, and they'll, they'll work on that.
Okay.
So it, you know, in this process, right, you're hearing all sorts of things from different boards and committees, as well as town staffs. Town staff is really your key area there, the department heads getting together to provide memos to you and to see. And you can identify those items in your letter to Mass Housing, and they're generally going to say great items, work it out with your ZBA, it's good, and tell the developer, you should work with the town on the issues that were raised, or something to that effect.
So, so that's my question. If we have to, the select board's role is to coordinate all of these comments with the staff is going to?
That is, that is your role, is to do this comment letter. And you can put those things in or not. Because those memos can really go to the ZBA, because that's where they're going to get addressed.
Right, okay.
So if you feel that they're so important, though, that they need to be brought up at this level. But those feel like items that the ZBA would.
Okay.
That they would, they would just handle in the, in the hearing process. And in the hearing process, all the issues get raised and addressed.
Okay.
So all the things the town wants out of the project, like some of these things, and all the things that the developer wants out of the project. Right? And so all of that trade off happens during the hearing process. And at that point, you see the entire project. Now we know, like, everything that the town wants, right? That's what the developer's saying. They're kind of waiting to see, like, what are all the requests? Look, let's look at all the plans. How is it working? And then you have, like, how is the wastewater really going to be handled and all of the, you know, that's a bigger kind of item, or the sidewalks, the access, the, that entrance there is a little, you know, like, gonna be some work there, probably, you know? Like, no, that's not a big secret, right? Like, when you turn in, you go like, oh, this might not work, right?
Right, right.
So, but all those, I think, are very known items, and that's what the ZBA does.
Okay.
Right? So your role, right, it's right here.
So conversely, the things that we should be collecting are really going to those seven major criteria that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you say you generally support the project and you have things to work out and you look forward to working with the applicant and the ZBA on those items. I mean, that might be one kind of response. I mean, you could, you know, make that be much longer.
But you said that we can include other comments that don't go to the general desirability of the project, but so we can include details of concern if we.
Of course you can, of course you can, but Mass Housing is not going to address those items. They're going to turn around. I mean, it's a place for you to collect them, but you wouldn't resolve them during this phase. And Mass Housing is not going to address them, but it's a way to carry them forward into the next phase of the project if you so choose.
But the, the, the select board would not be a party to the permit approval process before the Board of Appeals.
You have two, you have two roles that I had in the presentation. You have the 30 day review and comment period that you forward the comments to a Mass Housing. And then also you ensure adequate town department support and so you're a supportive role to ensure that the process is, but you don't have approval responsibilities or authority in the process.
Remind us, what they call it, a comprehensive permit. That includes zoning. Planning board. Conservation Commission or Natural Resources? Yes or no?
Some, I, I'm, sometimes a separate order of conditions is required.
So it's essentially, what about like historic districts or that, those things? Is it just planning and zoning?
I, I think historic districts would be included in the comprehensive permit.
They have jurisdiction. Okay. But that's it.
Yeah.
And then whatever other permits are needed, like natural resources, like orders of condition.
I think that the conservation, because that's kind of a specialized.
Or sewer capacity or whatever, those would be separate freestanding issues.
So I think DEP is probably a separate approval. Is that what you're asking about? I think separate DEP approval would be required, separate from the town, right? Because the town doesn't have that authority there, right?
I didn't understand that.
So I believe that the wastewater system would need to be approved, permitted by DEP. I don't know if permitted is the right word. But approve, approved by DEP anyway.
Would not be part of the comprehensive.
That is not part, DEP, the DP has their own authority.
But is this the right time to have the conversation about what the developer might need from the town?
I think all issues can be raised and put on the table. I wouldn't expect that you would resolve any of them now.
But we might want to hear it.
You want to hear big issues, right?
Like wastewater.
Yeah, if that's a big issue, you'd want to hear about it, but I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't expect that you would resolve that now.
Okay.
Because you don't know enough about the design, the capacities, what it's really going to take. But you would want to acknowledge together that this is something that we're going to work on. And here are the things we need to resolve the issue. But you, you're not able to hold up the eligibility process while you resolve that. You could identify the pieces of information that you're going to need on both party side, right? Like, there's some capacity here, presumably at the town, you're going to have to figure out. And then with the developer and what does all that mean, you know?
But if the developer needs has particular needs from that are under the jurisdiction of the select board, such as you know, like sewer capacity or concessions with regard to road improvement or traffic things. It might be something we want to hear about at the beginning to find out exactly. Not exactly, but at least approximately, what would, what, what was needed from the town in order to make the project feasible?
I think that in my experience, that, that those types of items, there's not enough information at this point in the project to be able to wrestle those to the ground. To identify that these are something to work out, but as the experts and the plans get further developed during the hearing process is where you would have enough information to resolve what to be done about those items.
If we don't wrestle into the ground, we might do a little grappling.
Generally, I think that the information, the level of information is not available on both parties' side to make the, you know. I mean, my experience, I mean, you know, every project's different, but sometimes I think the development team is here. I don't even know who they are. There's a lot of people here. Oh, hi. So if I'm speaking out of turn, you'll correct me, I'm sure. But the development team kind of wants to hear everything from the town before making really any concessions. Concessions might be the wrong word, but by making any agreements. Like, what is the total project? Like, what is the town asking versus like, oh, the transportation is over here, but now I'm going to ask for this thing over here, and I'm going to ask for this. Like, what is the total project? And then to have a discussion about how to go forward for both sides.
Okay.
But they will tell you whether that's how they want to approach that or not.
So is there anything else we should know about the process?
Nope. I was going to just say the ZBA like can have their, their independent peer reviews. And I just wanted to mention about the safe harbor aspect. I don't know if that's of interest. So Concord's just slightly below the 10% by, you know, all of the reckoning. In fact, three units short, right? So, so should Concord get three units on the SHI prior to the ZBA hearings opening? Concord could deny the hearings. Just, it's just so you know exactly how that process works. So the, the, the time when you say, oh, we're above 10% is, I think, two weeks after the ZBA application is filed. So you have to be in safe harbor at that time, otherwise you can't use that. Just to be very specific on that point, because I know that you sometimes like to be very specific.
You say two weeks after the filing of the.
Believe that's what it is, yeah.
Well, we could like annex some you from another town.
So it has to be actually SHI eligible. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a stress, but those are the, that's the specifics.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure we'll have many more questions.
Our 30 day period is, that's up on August 8th, do I understand that correctly?
I believe so, yes, yes. So there was an extension granted, you know, for that period, so.
So that's our deadline to get.
Yeah, so that's coming up in not very long, right? Exactly.
Okay.
And it's, it's okay. My plan was to present, I'm collecting the comments. I think it was asked of me at a previous meeting, so I'll have that for you at the, on the 7th to look at. The town staff met, department heads met today to review the project.
Well, it might be helpful if you could, like, circulate to the board.
Right.
The comments.
Definitely. Definitely, because I think there's some committees that want to weigh in too. So as liaisons, we can, we can, if you want, if that helps you, or you can just go out to all the committees.
Yeah, we have been advertising that. You know, through staff and, and kind of a few different channels, but yes, we'll, we'll try to get the word out.
Again, the hearing process is, there's, this isn't the end of the comment period at all, right? Like, all of these would really come to the hearing process, which is very extensive and really expects to hear from, you know, all the relevant parties.
Good. Good. Well, thank you very much. Now, do we have somebody here from the developer who can introduce? Dang, well.
We don't have enough tunes.
We can, we can, we don't need music for people to rotate among chairs. We can imagine their music. Okay.
Do you want to get the presentation?
Maybe we do need musical chairs.
Well, that's all right. No, they're doing fine. Hi, we have to do so. Yes, Dan, your Dan Holmes, right? Kevin Hurley and who else? Done my job for me, okay, well.
Well, make sure your, your mic is.
Yeah, you need to speak, we, you have to speak into the microphones for the Zoom and, and everything.
Very nice, okay. Okay.
Oh, so why don't we just say, um, we give you a 15 minutes to tell your story outside.
Sure.
Oh, yes, all right. Um, again, please reintroduce yourselves louder this time.
I am Dan Holmes, I live at two, two 11 Stone Root Lane here in Concord.
And your role with regard to this project?
I am the real estate lawyer for the project.
Real estate lawyer, yeah. And Kevin Hurley to your right?
He is, uh, responsible for, uh, permitting and design on behalf of the owner. Who's representative is Alan Peacock right there. He's a senior VP of Development.
You're the owner.
Taurus.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm with Taurus Investment Holding. We're the current owner of, uh, 310 and 300 Baker, uh, and the applicant, uh, for the project here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, so.
Plus, we have expertise.
You have what?
Expertise.
Expertise.
Yes.
Steph Kiefer, who is a lawyer and specialist in 40B matters. And she's guiding us through this process, because it's complicated and not common stuff for us mere real estate lawyers.
And then you have the guy with the orange tie.
And the guy with the orange tie is the real expert, that's Brett Pelletier, he's with Kirkland Company. And he runs their housing advisory and appraisal business.
Okay.
So he's the underwriting guy.
Okay, let's, let's start in.
Great, great. Uh, uh, this is a, uh, uh, multifamily project that's proposed for unused really and, and spare, in the, in the grand scheme of things, portion of the asphalt parking lot at 300 Baker Avenue, the old Gen Rad headquarters. So between that office building and the rail line, there's about 10 acres of land that's underutilized and that's going to be carved off. And instead of the parking that's there right now, the proposal is for two apartment buildings, 201 units, um, 25% of which will be affordable. So, uh, I personally am a big fan of housing that is at a discount to market. 25% of the units will be at 20 or 30 or even 35% below market. That's a great deal. And there are plenty of people in this town, youngsters coming home, um, oldsters like myself who might sell a house and be looking for a place to live that doesn't cost $1.5 million. The 75% of the units that are not below market are still, uh, I would think would be a real resource to the town. So that part of it, I really like just as a citizen. Um, and then the, the really special part about this project that Alan will talk about is that it is very, very environmentally friendly. It is designed with sustainability and reduced carbon impact in a way that's technologically really cutting edge. And you'll, you'll hear that this is a project that Taurus has rolled out in other states. Uh, but this would be the first time that it's rolled out in Massachusetts. And it's really intended to be a demonstration project, really, you know, the shining star. It shows what you can do when you combine multifamily housing development with really advanced sustainability technology. So two things that I know that Concord is very supportive of is housing for all and sustainability for us and for everybody else on the planet. And this project just completely lines up with those objectives, it seems to me. But you can make your own decision once you hear the details. You, you know who you're going to hear from? And, uh, Liz, I thought did a very nice job of saying, you know, your province at the moment is feedback to mass housing and say, as she said so well, big picture. Does this project line up with Concord's objectives? And I think from a big picture standpoint, what we're looking for after you've heard the testimony and ask questions, if you have detailed questions, then, then Brett and Stephanie can certainly answer those. But we would love you to go back to mass housing and say, gosh, this just almost to the letter lines up with the 2022 housing production plan. It's in the kind of place that we want housing to be. It's the kind of housing that we want. It's close to West Concord, close to the train station. There's live, work, play dynamics beside, you know, a, a, a commercial building and a hotel. It's not in the middle of a single family neighborhood. It's a great spot for it. And that's, that's at least the preliminary feedback we've gotten from folks in the town, in town departments that we've spoken with. They can speak for themselves. And then the sustainability part of it, I think, is also completely aligns with Concord's sustainability principles. It's, it's adopted. And if you go down the list of a dozen of them, this project checks off 10. So that's my big picture introduction.
Did you pick 201 units?
How, uh?
How did you pick 201?
Brett, how 201, how, why 201? Alan, how come 201?
Uh, that's where we, and my name's Alan Peacock. I'm Senior Vice President with Taurus Investment Holdings. And I was told, I was given counsel before I went into this meeting that I should listen to Good Will Hunting a few times before, uh, I actually speak. So, um, I can't hide my accent. So I hope that if y'all need me to repeat anything, please, please let me know. But thank you, Select Board Members, thank you, folks, the community. And Ms. Russ, thank you for, um, that, uh, that summary. That was even helpful for me and I'm in the middle of the process right now, so I appreciate that. Taurus Investment Holdings is, uh, actually domestically based out of Boston, uh, run by our principal, Peter Marigan. Um, we are a, a private equity global group, uh, that have offices all over, all over the world. Um, and, um, you know, this project is one that we're extremely excited about. We acquired the 300 Baker property back in, uh, 2020. Um, and as we continued to kind of shape what we call Novo, which is our, our brand of, uh, sustainability, in the apartment space, um, we started looking at different parts and pieces of how, um, density works, uh, how, uh, smart redevelopment works, uh, by implementing geothermal, uh, which is a heating and cooling source, uh, that uses no fossil fuels, uh, as well as solar, um, native plantings, um, and really an eye for, again, cutting edge conservation, uh, and sustainability. Um, so we're all about sustainability, um, just corporately as a policy. Um, and we're all about building communities, um, that are affordable for the working people, uh, in the places that we get to serve. Um, we landed on 201 units because we felt like that was the best density we could do on 10 acres. Um, when you look at the way the buildings are sited, we felt like it flowed in well with the adjacent hotel, uh, as well as the adjacent office building. Um, so that's kind of, there was no real magic of the 201. That's just where we felt like, uh, you know, the density would land at, at the best based on how the site laid out, which is Dan articulated about 250 parking spaces right now.
Yeah, so that's the most you could fit in the space essentially.
The most we could fit with, within reason, right? I mean, we could have proposed something that was, that wouldn't have, have worked for us or y'all. Uh, and we feel like this is more in reason as far as, you know, the height constraints and some of the other things that we're trying to design around in the site, so.
Yeah, you just take the bulk, divide by the proper size of apartments and you end up with 201.
And how did you end up with the, um, number of spaces in that, in the garage?
Uh, the number.
You have a very specific number of spaces in the, in the two garage areas.
So, yeah, both buildings have basement level garages.
Mm hmm.
And we don't have the architects here tonight, but I think Kevin will tell us.
I can go through that. Let me stop you by, just passing one of those around the table if you would. And then I'm just going to give the audience members that are here.
It's 1.5 acre parking spaces per unit here.
So my name, my name is Kevin Hurley. I live at 17 Mustafiel Road. Um, I am doing the land planning for the, for the project, which means I supervise the design team and I'll be in charge of doing the local permitting or working with the Board of Appeals, if you will. Um, I asked if we could have the PDF that we had sent to the town, but if we could go down to the locust map? So this is the locust map that we submitted. Taurus purchased 65 acres when they, when they bought 300, 310 Baker Ave. And we're proposing to divide that property into the area that's shown as the locus, which is where Novo Riverside Commons, the name of the apartment community would be located. And this evening I'll just refer to it as Riverside. In the center there, you can see the existing office building in the light color. Um, and that's designated as 300, 310 Baker Ave. And Taurus will retain 48 acres with that existing office building. On the extreme right, you'll see a parcel that's identified as parcel B, um, that has 6.8 acres and over 1,300 feet of frontage on the Asabet River. And we're proposing that that be conveyed to the town as conservation land. It's some of the most sensitive land on the property. Um, Taurus is property, is part of what the town or the local individuals, they are called Concord Meadows. Concord Meadows includes all of Taurus's 65 acres. It includes the Marriott Hotel, which is not owned by Taurus, and includes the Harvard Vanguard Building. Uh, another nearby land use, which is shown at, at the southeast corner of this property, uh, is, uh, Conca Green, which as we all know is a residential condominium. We believe this site for the locus or for Riverside, uh, is an attractive site because of its proximity to both the center of West Concord and to the MBTA rail station. If I could have the next slide. This is a rendering of what the building closest to Baker Ave would look like. Um, the building contains, uh, 210 units, uh, I'm sorry, 118 units. It has 121 podium parking spaces. And it has that 121 because we could, at this particular site, portion of the site, we could develop two levels of podium parking in the basement levels of the building. So the basement levels will have a total in this particular building of 121 parking spaces. In a few moments, you'll see a view of the second building. The second building has 83 units in it. It has one level of podium parking and that has 40 parking spaces. In addition to that, we have 143 surface parking spaces. So we have 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which generally is recognized as the type of parking that you should have for multifamily housing. If I could have the next slide, please. This is the landscape architect's plan, which illustrates, um, both where the buildings are going, where the parking is going, existing trees and proposed trees. And, um, it shows overall just vegetation that will be retained and/or planted. So all of the existing drop trees that are shown on this plan will be retained. If I could have the next slide, please.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
The proposed garage at the bottom, is that on Taurus land? It's, I know it's not part of this, but is that on?
That is on Taurus's property and it would be permitted as part of the office building to provide parking at the front entrance to the office building.
What office building?
Uh, the top of the slide, it says existing 300, 310.
Right.
That's the old Gen Ride headquarters.
Right.
And that's, and that's to, and that's to replace parking that will be taken away by the ground coverage for the apartments, is that correct?
Yes.
So that the remaining land would have the necessary parking ratio.
Exactly right.
The overall goal will be to make sure that the remaining land, the 300, 310 Baker Ave, commercial use meets the zoning bylaw requirements for required parking for the, the particular uses that are there, which is office, medical, um, are the principal uses in that building.
Okay. And you run into a problem with impervious surface on that site?
No, we do not.
Any groundwater conservancy district?
I, this, the location of the office garage or the garage for 300, 310 is actually is parking today. So we're just replacing surface parking with a garage.
Um, so if I could have the next slide, please. This shows the end of the building that faces Baker Ave. And then along the right hand side of what's shown as the building is the building as you go back along the access drive to the right. It's a five story residential building. And one of the things that we wanted to show with this particular study is the relationship of existing and proposed trees. On the left hand side of the building, we show trees that, let me just catch my point here, that are 56 to 72 feet high. And then the very short trees are approximately 20 feet high and they're the proposed trees. But again, any trees that we show, whether it's on these sections or whether it's on the plans themselves, will be retained. There's a few trees we removed, but they're not shown on the plans. Could I have the next slide, please? This shows the northerly end of the back building. On the left is the entrance to the podium parking. And it shows on the left both a tree that is 60 foot high and a tree that is 75 foot high. And on the opposite side of this building, we show a tree that is 76 feet high. Again, we made a strong commitment to not only save the trees, but know how they relate to the particular site design. Could I have the next slide, please? This is the engineered site plan. It shows the layout of all the parking spaces on the surface of the property. It shows the vehicle entrances and circulation throughout the property, the entrance to the podium parking. It also shows, you can't see it at this level, but if you took a look at the original plan, it will be on file with, actually, the original plan is on file now, but will also be filed with the Board of Appeals. The building to the south with numbered 292, that number still has to be approved by the town's building commissioner. But the building to the south of the bottom of the sheet is almost 50% on, sits on almost 50% of existing pavement. The building at the top of the sheet, which we've numbered 294, sits entirely on existing paved surfaces. So th- this is really replacing, uh, commercial parking lots with residential use. We also show a number of other things on this site, one of which we have highlighted is shown in bright yellow. And it's a 10 foot wide public trail that will be built by the applicant and open for use by the general public. Another thing that you can see on this plan is there's green circles and there's green circles that are crossed. And the green circles are the location of existing trees. And the green circles with the cross are those trees that we actually surveyed, the height of, of those particular trees. So then if I could go back to the landscape site plan, which I think is three drawings back, this one. And if we could make that slightly smaller, you can see the building on the bottom of the sheet, there's light green trees adjacent to the building. And then between the two buildings, there's a row of light green trees. And at the top building on the sheet, above the building, on the right hand end of that building is uh, green, light green trees. Those are all proposed trees. All the trees shown in dark green are existing trees. And all of those trees will be retained as part of the project. And all of those trees will be retained as part of the project. Um, we believe that this site, uh, is an optimal site for multifamily apartment units, given its proximity to both West Concord Center and given its proximity, uh, to the MBTA rail station in West Concord. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you or the audience might have.
Sure. Um, I'd like to ask about the rents. So there's going to be two hundred and one units, right? And about fifty of those are going to be affordable according to what, eighty percent of AMI?
Yep.
Okay. And then, so the other seventy-five percent would be, what's the rent range? So when we talk about, is, are these going to be luxury units? Are these going to be, what's, what's your view as far as the type of renter you're going to be?
Yes, ma'am. We would consider those Class A units the balance.
I don't know what that means.
Uh, luxury units, to use your words, is just, it, it's another, Class A would be more of what the market would establish for what you're describing luxury units.
So they would be luxury units?
Yes, ma'am.
And so they, they. So they'd be very high-end rate rents?
Uh, when we say very high-end, they would be, uh, they would be in step with, with market rents. Yes, ma'am.
Give us an idea of what that, what, talking about, what approximate range?
I, I think I recall correctly, and this is not my area, but that those rents would begin for the one bedrooms at around two thousand and run up to forty-seven hundred dollars a month for the three-bedroom units.
We, we should state as well, the, the, the breakdown is approximately forty percent. Right now, again, this is very preliminary, about forty percent one bedrooms, fifty percent two bedrooms and ten percent three bedrooms, just for reference, based on the rates that, that Kevin was talking. Thank you.
And in terms of, again, this, I know that all of this is very preliminary, but in terms of like the economic impact, or approximately what kind of taxable value are we talking about for this, for, for this development? So we could get some idea of the revenue that might be generated.
Yes, sir.
For, for the benefit of the town.
Yes, sir. I'll have to defer to Brett on that one that he was interested in.
These housing developments are taxed just like traditional multifamily properties are taxed. So they'd be taxed on a, on a valuation basis. Um, just like any other multifamily project would be, I think the preliminary estimates, uh, on, on total construction costs are. Second.
Another way of looking.
So we, how much?
About a hundred million dollars.
That's annually cost to build.
Correct. So if it's, no, 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 that, that's the development cost. So if you assume that that is, that is day one, bright and shiny, the cost to construct, um, depending on how your tax structure is, is, is done by ad valorem, you would expect, um, some amount less than that.
And that's kind of pretty much in line with like about a half million bucks per unit.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, wait, I, I guess I'd ask you two questions. One would be, how much do we get for the building permit? And then how much do we get annually from property taxes?
Right.
Those are the two ways I think about it.
Right.
Well, you can figure that from the total value, right?
Yeah, but, um.
We'd have to apply the tax rate to the total value.
I don't know what your current tax rate is.
It's about thirteen dollars.
Thirteen dollars, so. Yeah.
On the spot.
One point three million dollars. Right, is that right? Yeah.
Per year.
Property per year. If you assume a hundred percent valuation on a hundred percent of the construction cost. It's, it's taxed just like your house would be.
No, I understand.
Based on, you know, looking back two years or a year and a half or something.
Well, okay, okay, thank you.
And the permit value, I'm not sure. That would be easy to figure out, though.
And so we're also probably figuring maybe something like a hundred plus, uh, s- schoolchildren coming in this, uh, this project in terms of, um, I'm talking, thinking about load on resources that we have to deal with. Um, uh, you know, um, because there's a, of course, there's a cost that's incurred by the town for, um, uh, you, for, 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 for any housing, whether it be, um, sewer improvement or schools or, you know, those are the more, uh, ones where you can assign more specific costs.
Sure, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, Stephanie, she'll talk about that a little bit more, but, um, statistically, you're at a much lower rate than a hun, than, than one, um, one half per unit. Uh, because one-bedroom units typically don't have any children, uh, school-aged children. Two-bedroom units have between, you know, point two-five and five, a half percent. Uh, and then three bedrooms are usually between about point six-five and one and a little bit more. Um, but realistically, uh, forty B. Oh, I'm going to turn it over to the lawyers.
Good evening again, Stephanie Kiefer, um, from Smallock and Bond. Um, thank you for, um, your thoughtful questions this evening, first of all. Um, relative to the, the question about, um, children, um, how many children, school-aged children would this generate? Um, as Brett referenced, there's actually an MAPC study that was done probably about five, six years ago that, that found that in, in multifamily, it's actually, um, he was going through the numbers. It's actually, um, far less than what people anticipate. Um, and, and they're looking at, or they looked at it a, a horizon of probably like two to five years or so at that. Um.
But we, you don't know what we think it would be, though. But it's going to be less, whatever it is we think.
Well, no, when you, when you suggested that it might be a hundred, that's roughly a half per unit. Um, so I was just, yeah, picking up on, on Brett's that that's, um, experience in, in forty Bs, um, you know, through MAPC as, as well as my own has, um, it, it's, it, it tends to always be less than what the community thinks it may be, um, oddly, you know, for whatever reason. Um, and, and again, it's, it's the mixture of units, right? You have ones, twos and threes, so obviously the threes are more likely to have your schoolchildren.
And it may be also related to the, uh, the re, the rental price for the units as well.
Well, well, again, it goes, we have the range of pricing, right? So we have the, uh, the market rate units and then units that are, um, you know, made affordable. So there is a range, um, of pricing within the units themselves. Um, these, these are very good questions, um, but I, I, I do just want to say that under, um, guidance from the state agencies, the, um, as, as a matter of fair housing, um, the zoning board, when it gets the application and reviews it, it, it's not supposed to be looking at that because we want to make certain that there's not discrimination. But, but, but I understand.
Right.
Where your questions are coming from.
Right, right. So I'd be really interested, um, in getting a link to that MAPC study and also to, um, those calculations that you just talked about that sound very standard, like it was something like point six-five kids from three bedroom, whatever it was. If you could email that to Shannon or someone and, and, um, I'd, I'd love to see that. Thank you.
Yes, so, and I, 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 I know that it's, that some of these questions you're raising here are not ones that are appropriate for the zoning board of appeals to consider in approving or not approving the project. It's a matter of, um, essentially there may impose conditions that do not render the project economically unfeasible as I, as I understand it, correct?
Right.
Um, so are there any concessions that you think you need from the town in order to render the project economically feasible?
Uh, Alan can a- answer that, but I, I wouldn't think that, um, anything that we would ask the town to do would be called a concession from the town. And, you know, uh, water and sewer people are customers. Um, so we'll, we'll need town water, we'll need town sewer. Um, we're not anticipating that that's going to be an issue. We're not asking anybody to build a road for us. Um, it's not asking anybody to extend a utility line.
We do have a sewer hookup fee.
Does the town sewer serve the property today?
It does.
It does.
It does.
And we do have a hookup fee.
Yeah, the mo, the most recent connection was the hotel. Uh, the Harvard Vanguard Building is on septic because when it was built, there was not sewer capacity. Alan Cathcart had not yet done his magic. And so there wasn't capacity then, but he did his magic and there was capacity for the hotel. And, and we believe we can, you know, we may find out otherwise, but our operating assumption based on preliminary conversations is that there's adequate capacity at the plant for this development.
So is the sewer hookup fee part of your economic analysis when you're putting together the costs?
Yes, it is, and it's one point five million.
Okay.
But just a little bit north of one point five million.
Okay.
And we're evaluating whether we'd ask for relief for the affordable units, but we would definitely pay the fee for the market rate units.
Thank you.
Are the affordable units spread across all three classes, the one, two and three bedroom?
They must be, and they are.
They are, okay.
So, um, driving around the parking lot there a couple of weeks ago, I saw that almost all around the border of it are these signs that say, subject to flooding.
Yes.
Um, do, do you have any observations related to that?
It is in the floodplain conservancy district and the design takes account of that.
Yeah. The whole thing is in the floodplain?
No, there's, uh, there's a little over four acres. So that the lot that this is being developed on, it consists of a little over ten acres. There's a little over four acres that is not in the floodplain, not in the wetlands. It's also a conservation restriction on port, portions of the property. And it's not, the, the four acres is not, that portion of it is not within the conservation restriction. So most of the development will take place out, outside of those resource areas. At the present time, we're proposing no work in the wetlands. We would propose work in the buffer areas. And the only exception that I'd make to that is we're still evaluating the condition and size of the sewer pipe under the river. Uh, that pipe under the river is owned by Taurus. It's used by Taurus and it's used by, uh, the, uh, extended stay, um, uh, facilities. And i- if it's adequate, we will use that existing pipe. And that would, obviously would be our preference. If it isn't, then replacing that pipe would be part of, uh, work within the, within the wetlands. In terms of the floodplain, uh, portions of this site that we intend to develop are in the floodplain. And, um, we will have to provide one-to-one compensatory storage uh, for the, any work that is in the floodplain. A lot of those signs that the CHSR, particularly along, along the rear of the office building and on the northerly end of the office building is because that land is in the floodplain and has not been raised above the floodplain. Most of our parking will be in the podium. And we're making sure that the podium parking is not subject to flooding by controlling the elevation of the land as you enter the podium parking. And then a lot of the surface parking will be above the floodplain. But we will probably end up with some similar signs on some of the land saying, don't park here if this a hundred years event is going to occur.
So I was in, interested in some of the comments you made about sustainability objectives. And I was wondering whether, um, the parking, particularly the indoor parking would, would provide for electric vehicle charging. We heard earlier that, that Concord is amongst the highest adopters of electric vehicles already, as well as are there any plans for solar or storage on the site?
There is definitely plan for solar and for car charging. And I wrote down a comment that was made earlier this evening that six point four percent of the vehicles in Concord are electric. Uh, you will see us providing at least six point four percent charging stations to begin with. But we will set the building and the parking lots up to extend charging stations uh, as the use of electric vehicles grows. And we all know that that's going to grow significantly.
Six point four percent for the rest of us that do math is one out of fifteen, actually, which is a pretty, pretty high adoption rate.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Uh, just quickly, um, I heard that the site visit was very informative and I unfortunately was out of town and I'm hoping that you'll be able to do another site visit at some point for interested officials.
We, we do intend to, that's an interesting comment and we'll have to take that into consideration. We're considering having a public information meeting.
Okay.
Where we would invite boards, committees, residents, uh, to attend. And maybe we should do it a little bit earlier than we might otherwise have thought, so people could look at the site with us too. Um, we, we probably would not do that in August just because of the sense that in Concord, a lot of people are away during the month of August. And we probably plan on doing that in early September.
Very good, thank you.
So one of the most common, um, suggestions that I've already heard about this project is that there is a need for improved pedestrian access to the West Concord, um, Business District and MBTA Station. Have you got any thoughts along those lines about what solutions might be available for that?
I'm going to introduce Alan again and say that, uh, he is your model corporate citizen.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, we, we have, we have looked at connectivity and that's, that's part of what in, uh, uh, one thing that I, I left out is when we talk about our Novo brand, this is not a practice run for us here, uh, in the town of Concord. Uh, we've done this successfully, uh, in a suburb right outside of Orlando, Florida, and are in the process of developing a twenty-three-hundred acre master plan community in Austin, Texas that implements all of the geothermal, all of the solar, all of the EV charging stations, um, all of the, the package that we deliver with, with Novo, which also considers, um, you know, direct connectivity to mass transit. Um, so we, we, we do have that factored into our plans.
So does, uh, can I infer from that that there may be some discussions with the MBTA about maybe adjusting or configuring the station in such a way that might facilitate that?
No, but one of the reasons that I had shown earlier on the site plan, which is the landscape and the site plan itself, there's a ten-foot wide pedestrian trail. That pedestrian trail has three-foot shoulders on either side, so it's a sixteen-foot wide overall access trail. And it begins at Baker Ave and runs to the very back of the developed portion of the ten acres that we've been talking about. And then we've had discussions and attended meetings, uh, at the planning department's request because we know the town has under design, uh, the crossing of the Azabeth River. And we've committed to connect the end of that path, uh, to allow the town to make whatever improvements it wants to make. Once that bridge is constructed and the path is further extended, then the back building that we showed, the front door to the back building will be approximately a thousand feet from the MBTA station in West Concord.
Good. Thank you.
One more, I have one more. Um, I, I think you're right that the fact that it's close to the station is a real benefit of this site. Um, but still you're, you're, um, planning on three hundred parking spaces, which I'm assuming is three hundred cars, right? And in that general area, it's, it's already quite congested when the train pulls into the station. So have you thought about that at all as far as, I mean, it's, I know you're thinking about this site, but then how does it impact the areas around it? And three hundred cars is, is a lot of cars. So you've got constraint on Baker Ave, you've got the rotary, which we know gets congested. So what are your, what, have you thought about that?
We have, and we've retained VHB, Van Ness, Hagen, Breslin, they're well-recognized traffic consultants. And they're analyzing, they're doing traffic studies onsite, uh, at the intersections. And they will come out with a comprehensive report that will be part of our application to the Board of Appeals.
But this, you know, this may be one of the, um, unintended consequences of our, the application of our current parking bylaw.
Right.
Which leads in many cases, just excessive paving.
Right.
Instead of actual parking that is required. And I think this might be a good opportunity to actually look at what parking is actually necessary for, you know, uh, sound transportation policies rather than covering the, covering the ground with the paving necessary to meet the bylaw.
Hmm. And I, I would remark that unless I'm wrong, one of the waivers that we need to ask for is to have as few as one point five parking spaces per unit. Because otherwise the town bylaw would require, I think that we have two.
Well, that's exactly one of the consequences of our parking bylaw is. is that almost everything anybody does requires waivers.
You're right. Just a little bit, the point is, um, you know, Taurus is now looking to trade one kind of pollution for a different kind of pollution.
Exactly.
Right. So uh, E Vs.
As I say, choose your poison.
Well, E Vs are still traffic though.
And so I know it's not exactly this project, but the the proposed parking garage that's at the three hundred Baker Avenue site is that, has any kind of design or or application been submitted for that? And can you characterize how many stories that parking area lot might be?
That will be three stories plus a basement of parking, so four levels overall. It will contain three hundred and sixty-three parking spaces. It hasn't been fully designed, but that's the conceptual uh, concept. We will apply for that relatively soon. Um, and in order to build that parking garage, we need to, we would be building it on top of, I believe the number is, but I stand to be corrected, a hundred and forty-six parking spaces. In other words, where that garage is shown on that plan is currently surface parking that accommodates a hundred and forty-six spaces. The demand for parking is really at the front of the building, up front of three hundred, three ten.
Right.
If you look at the area where we're talking about putting the residential, it's very sparsely parked. And then what I would call the northwest portion of the parking, not what's behind the building, but all at the opposite end of the building, it was fairly sparsely parked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if Linda has any questions, maybe?
Linda, you still there?
I am, um.
Do you have any questions?
I do, and um, one question I have is what consideration? I I noticed that um, the structures take up most of the land in that area um, that's been um, dedicated to this project. And I'm wondering what consideration has been given to some immediate space to the buildings, given that we have families and probably seniors and people of all ages who aren't necessarily going to want to get on the trail to go over to Ride Out Park and some of the other amenities that exist in the area?
We're looking into that. Um, there is very little land on site without disturbing wetlands to provide for recreational facilities. But we also feel that the residents will be using the cafe that is located at three hundred, uh, three ten Baker Ave. And at the rear of that cafe, there is a basketball court and a volleyball court. And then those facilities are not normally used outside of lunchtime by the occupants of three hundred and three ten Baker Ave. So just as there's shared parking on the overall property that Taurus and Marriott Hotel owns, we may end up with shared recreation facilities, uh, some of which might be located outside of the ten point two acres.
So dedicated space, even if we're not talking about space for the children to play, dedicated space for other residents who may not be able to travel long distance from the building will not be available close to the buildings?
It it will be available directly o- on land that's almost directly within, I would say the land is within a couple hundred feet of where the existing recreational facilities are. That's a guess on my part. But we'll also have community rooms in both buildings. And the actual use of those c- community rooms has not been determined at this point. You know, whether that should take a a use that would be more like a gym or whether it should be meeting rooms or what that space should be used for. Um, we have not made a commitment in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You very much, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Sit down with us and talk with us. We'll probably be seeing a lot of each other for the next couple of years, right?
We hope so, true.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Very interesting.
Say your words.
Am I supposed to accuse myself of someone of matters?
For what? We're not doing anything, we're just listening. Right? Yes, I'm not voting. We're not voting on anything, are we?
We never vote, you're right.
Okay, good, 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 thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Well, it was our pleasure, thank you for coming.
Wow. Come back.
Okay, good, good.
Okay, so who's left?
Diehards.
Was it, we're looking at the agenda that was sent out for uh, uh, an update on Jerome, was that done earlier?
Yeah, it was here, yes, it was. But it was just a uh, it was, we took no action on it, it required no action, it was just a report. And if you will look at the package for tonight's meeting online, you will see the written memorandum, which covers everything that the town manager covered in our meeting. And I'm sorry that you were waiting for that, but.
Fine, our jury interested in this other project as well, so.
So, okay, so you got, so you got some free entertainment.
Terrific, okay, thanks everyone.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it. And do look at the material, you know, you know how to get those materials? You go on the website, you go to select board and then you go down to the meeting materials for tonight. And you will see it there, thank you. All right, what does that leave, is it goals and objectives?
Yes.
Yes.
Getting past my bedtime. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Good night, Julia.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Okay.
Goals.
Goals, okay.
We have goals.
We have goals, I think we've talked about them, we amalgamated them. Uh, and uh, is there anything left for us to do other than um, adopt them or?
Well, what what are we adopting if it's some appendix A in the July tenth minutes?
I don't know, I think there, isn't there this thing here with blue on the top?
Blue.
Blue stripes? I think we have a s- blue stripes.
Blue stripes, is that certain pages in the packet or?
Is it near the end of the packet, um?
Okay. Yeah, okay, all right.
Consolidated Select Board Goal Sheet, page one seventeen.
Is it, is it possible to increase the size of that?
Yeah.
That's good.
Can I ask, can you do that on the third one where it says residential tax exemption that we remove the school debt?
That we what?
Remove school debt.
Yeah.
Yes, we can remove school debt.
Thank you.
The word is words.
So what would it read now?
Just residential tax exemption, period.
You don't have the word ray, you're a ray.
Oh, yeah, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, so in probably the comment there would be to, you know, reduce the real estate impact for the lowest one-third of those.
Yes.
Yeah.
Reduce real estate impact for low, yeah, so you take out the whole middle section, got it, good, thank you.
I'd like to ask a question about the first goal relative to the budget. So the, the first goal, promote efficiency, quality, and focus of select board and town government, cut costs and tighten town budget, enhance revenues. Um, and then it says outline. Are, is the intent here for fiscal twenty-four or going forward to, for fiscal twenty-five?
Carrie, I think that's part of the goal too, sorry, it's a little confusing without the Excel lines in there. But so it's Carrie and Linda's goal, where it's like from cut costs down to the clarifying five-year priorities.
Okay, it's so um, still, my my question is, is is the select board goal to be looking at work done in the fiscal twenty-four budget that was appropriated by town meeting or that's going forward looking into um, the the fiscal twenty-five budget process that we would be working on during fiscal fiscal twenty-four?
So my um, what I had in mind, it was one of my top goals, is as we develop twenty-five budget, uh, because the twenty-four budget is done. And we already have to make some cuts now due to some technical issues, calculation issues. So going into twenty-five, um, I know there was some detail that I put in and you and I have talked also.
I I just wanted to clarify.
For twenty-five, to look at streamlining, reorganizing, and um, cost avoidance and things like that.
Okay, because there, there is a comment about a hiring freeze and I have heard about that from some staff members. And I just want to.
Where does it say hiring?
Under, under the comments. Um, and if, I I can tell you, it was confusing to staff who heard for the entirety of the Personnel Study Task Force that there was talk about the vacancy rate and the high level of vacant positions. And then to see a a note about a hiring freeze.
Right, and it's got my initials and I don't really think that that we need a hiring freeze. So I'm not sure how that got in there, but I would say to take that out.
So we're going to change the, we're going to change F Y twenty twenty-four to F Y twenty twenty-five and remove the words hiring freeze.
Right, okay, it's good, okay.
Okay.
All right, now we're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion as, as?
Um, the other thing is that, this is my fault, but we had the action.
We're not blaming anybody.
Well, that's okay, I'm taking responsibility for this anyway. So we had for the action item, town staff to prepare a report for the first select board meeting in September.
Town staff to what?
Right here, uh, prepare a report for the first select board meeting in D C. Cutting costs and tightening town budget and enhancing revenue and all of that, okay?
Right.
This is from, but um, at the same meeting, we changed the dates of our select board meetings. So what happens, what happened is it's now set for September eighteenth. And I'm going to be away then, I was thinking it would be early September when I saw this. So I apologize. I'm wondering if it's possible to move that report to that meeting that we said we were going to have Au- August twenty-eighth? Whether that would be too early or just?
Okay, I'm I'm a little bit confused now because we're, we're talking about F Y twenty-five, right?
Right.
Then why are we, why wouldn't that just be part of the budget conversation?
Right, that's a good question. Well, we have this action item that we had in our July tenth minutes, I guess it was about.
I thought it was about the goals, Carrie.
It's more about town manager and department goals for twenty-four. Strategic planning process to clarify five-year priorities. And it all kind of got lumped together.
So this just re- refers to the um.
I guess so, I guess these two things didn't get lumped together, yeah.
Okay, good, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Just amalgamated, we just threw everything into.
Yeah, we did.
So maybe we just need to clarify that some of it is to, the town manager and department goals for F Y twenty-five, right? Or is?
No, actually, we do want to hear the goals for twenty-four.
You're right, we do, I'm sorry.
So maybe the problem was that these things all got amalgamated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Anyway, I'd like to request, if, if is it possible to do that August twenty-eighth?
The F Y twenty-four goals, August twenty-eighth, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right. Do I hear the motion?
We need a motion?
No, for this?
No, I mean a motion.
But we have, there's another motion that's appropriate this time.
Move to adjourn. Is that the one you're talking about?
That's the one, yes.
Drop these goals or?
I know, we're, you want to have them rea- re- redigested and come back on August eighth.
Another question, when are we doing the town manager evaluation?
Oh, that's August eighth as well. Next, next time, next time, okay?
Yep.
Very good.
So could I just make a comment about the um, comments we just made on the goals? Is there a way to um, re- re-draft that, I guess, and distribute that to the board members?
Good idea, can we do that?
I'm going to suggest sticking a blank line in between each real line, so.
Yeah, kind of.
Makes it a little more readable.
Muncher.
Yeah, there you go. Or do that alternate gray white thing.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Hi.
It's Ackerman.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Mrs. Escobedo.
Hi, thank you, everyone.
She's, she's adjourned herself and. And she's there, but she.
Screens, okay.
Lost the screen.
Yeah, she's still there.
Again.
Linda, do you agree to adjourn?
Hi.
Yes.
Linda's saying, yes, I can see, okay. And myself, Mary Hartman, yes.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Oh, wait, I need to sign this through.
I apologize.